Gentlemen, welcome to the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting on Wednesday, October the 10th. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And I'd like to request that the city clerk read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. And before proceeding, just wanted to make sure we also closed up the special meeting and there is no items to report, just for confirmation.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And with that being closed, we are into our regular meeting. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, October 12th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, October 14th at 9:00 AM. It is being closed. Caption will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit total time for public comment or any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide it to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
For the roll call, council member Nguyen is absent. Council member Detrick?
Here.
Council member Hium?
Here.
Vice Mayor Suon?
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
I am here. And next item is Pledge of Allegiance. We're part of the hazing process. I'm gonna ask Heather Neff to lead us a pledge. Just wanted to give you a hard time, Heather. Thank you, Heather. At the beginning of every regular city council meeting, the council would like to invite the members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. So if you could, please. Thank you very much. We have an agenda in front of us. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Extention. All right, next item.
We have no items under Section 3 for the closed session, which will take us to Section 4 for our presentations and announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is recognition of the City of Elk Grove Disability Advisory Committee's 12th Annual Above and Beyond Program Accessibility Awards.
Okay, who's up?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you very much for inviting us and letting this be on your agenda. My name is Ted Clark, and I am the Chair of the Elk Grove Disability Advisory Committee, better known as the DAC. At this time, I'd like to introduce our members. Unfortunately, our Vice Chair, Karen Gressenmeyer, and Steve Capps could not make it this evening. We do have Tim Gorskielowski and Bruce Kager. Could you two please stand so everybody can recognize and see who you are? The DAC would like to take a moment and thank the most important member of the DAC, Mr. Jim Ramsey. He is our city advisor. Without Jim, the DAC would be going nowheres. As someone once said, "Jim herds cats and turns it into a perfectly flowing herd of long-headed horn cattle going down the Kansas Trail." Jim gets to do all the lovely behind-the-scenes things that the DAC is credited with doing, but it's all, Jim is the man that makes everything happen. He's the one that creates and turns out these seamless events such as the Disability Awareness Day that I know that you're all acquainted with. So on behalf of the DAC, thank you for your assistance, your help, and your friendship, Jim. Tonight, we are handing out the 12th Annual Elk Grove DAC Above and Beyond Award. This award is given to individuals, businesses, and organizations that go above and beyond in assisting the disabled. This is a truly great award, and it's very touching to the DAC. This is probably the most important project that we do each year. Not only do we get to thank the award winners, and this evening we will have two award winners and three, and we'll get to recognize three honorable mention, but not only do we get to thank them for everything that they do for the disabled of our community, but it Elk Grove's recognition of people with disability. And we'd like to thank the council for everything they do for people with disabilities. And now I'd like to turn it over to our first presenter, Tim Gorskielowski.
Slight change. My name is Bruce Kager, and I will be presenting the first award to Kathy Rhimes, so if she can come up. Kathy Rhimes is the Program Director of Zen Car Services. Kathy was nominated for her work with Zen Car Services as a day program for adults with disability. Kathy works hard to provide them with exclusive experiences, including outreach activity benefiting animal shelters and the homeless. Kathy brings involvement into this program with themed days like Hero Day, Yoga Day, and Movie Day, and outings to the state fair. Kathy's devotion and selfless work towards enriching the lives of adults with special needs show that she is truly above and beyond. We want to thank Kathy for her efforts by presenting this plaque. And the plaque reads as follow: City of Elk Grove Above and Beyond Accessibility Award, honoring Kathy Rhimes' Zen Car Services for outstanding and dedicated service to improving the quality of life for individuals with disabilities. Elk Grove, California, dated October 2018.
Congratulations.
You guys happen to realize that that was not Tim, correct? So I'm so thrilled to be here, Mayor, and wonderful council members who I know well and appreciate the opportunity, obviously, because it's close to my heart, a lot of the folks here. The first person we'd like to recognize is Vanessa Beaker. Vanessa, would you come up front? Here she comes. I happen to know Vanessa very well, and her father. Come on up.
My best man. I need him.
We would like to, I would like to present this award to you, but prior to that, I'm gonna read, I'm going to read, so don't pick on me about reading. So, "Our first award recipient is Vanessa Beaker, President of Fly Brave Foundation. Vanessa was nominated for her volunteer work with the Fly Brave Foundation, which she created in 2016 with the goal of opening an employment training program for adults with autism and developmental disabilities. As an autism mom, she wanted to help those with autism and developmental disabilities toward independence and experience in the pride of earning their own money," which is, brings tears to your eyes, and it's a real godsend. "Participants sell jewelry and T-shirts they create themselves that help the food bank, practice public speaking, and attend various social skill-building events, including a twice-weekly fitness program with the Elk Grove Police Department. Vanessa's commitment and efforts toward helping those with disabilities shows that she truly goes above and beyond. We want to thank Vanessa from the bottom of our heart for all the work she does by presenting this plaque to her." Thank you, Vanessa.
If I could have my mom come up here too with my parents, I just want to thank the city, and family's really important to me, and I wouldn't have been able to leave my career behind and start over if it weren't for my parents, Elk Grove residents, Reverend Beaker and my mom. So, thank you so much, and thank you, everybody here, and God bless you all.
Hey, Vanessa, before you leave, I want people to know, I met Vanessa a year ago at a function, and she actually approached me to get involved in Elk Grove because there was nobody down in Elk Grove at the level she wanted to bring the awareness of autism. And I met her and her son, John. John's there in the back, and John is a phenomenal young man, just qualified for the Boston Marathon. And the thing, I think the thing that I have to applaud you the most on is a mother with a child with autism, how you've stuck by your son, taken him to a level that most parents would say, "I'm gonna put him in schools and not worry about him." You've taken ownership, and John's turned out to be a fine young man and a phenomenal athlete. So congratulations to you, and congratulations to John as well.
Thank you so much. And I just want to say thank you for being a huge support for me. Like, we made it into Elk Grove because you believed in our vision, and I want to say that our families are our heartbeat. So to all of our families that are there today, we're here because of you, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I told you that was very close to my heart, so. And truly, I love everything you had to say. I appreciate it as well, because it's heartfelt. I would like to offer the honorable mention that, we had three honorable mentions this year, and one is going to Kent Oliver, and I don't believe Kent was able to make it this evening, but we would still like to acknowledge him as well. Kent Oliver is a volunteer for Project Ride, and I think some of you may have met Kent as well, a very nice young man. Kent walks alongside riders while they're on horseback and helps them calm them down and puts their parents at ease when they're on the horses. He also has been invaluable by referring many new volunteers to the program over the past eight years. We want to thank Kent, in his absence, obviously, for his efforts, and we have a, we also have a honorable mention placard that we were gonna present to him as well at a later time. So let's hear it for Kent, please. So, in addition to that, I would like to ask if we have anybody from CARD here, it's Center for Autism and Related Disorders of Elk Grove. Do we have anyone here to receive the honorable mention? And I don't believe we had anyone that was able to make it this evening. So, the Center for Autism and Related Disorders, or CARD, of Elk Grove, they've provided an inclusive environment designed to reinforce positive social behaviors in those with autism and related disorders. They not only provide services for those with disabilities, but also provide training for professionals and parents of those with autism and related disorders. And we would love to thank CARD in their absence with presenting them a placard as well. So maybe we have a hand for what they do, please. So the last one is Sheri Hu, and I'm not sure if Sheri is available either. So I don't think she was able to make it, but we would still like to recognize her as well. It would be our final person that we chose as an honorable mention, and we would like to thank her for her work with children and disabilities at Creekside Church. And I know Sheri, and it's a godsend with the work that she actually does. And she leads Hearts in Motion, Sunday School Ministry for Children with Special Needs. It helps to ensure those kids can attend church camps in the Awana program, which I'm very familiar with, and she's a very wonderful person, and maybe we have a hand for her in her absence for all the wonderful things she does. It's so very touching, and I know Steve remembers well, you know, the past years, and it's very touching, some of the things that the people do in our community to help these with the disabilities. And we're all trying to play a part, and again, to reiterate what was spoken earlier, we can't tell you how much we appreciate all of what you guys do to support you and additional to a lot of other names we won't go into, but there's a lot of the team with the city that do fantastic work toward promoting a lot of the things that we've promoted as well to make the city more user-friendly for those with disabilities. So thank you, guys, very much.
All right, 4.2.
And item 4.2 is a proclamation declaring October 2018 as Disability Awareness Month.
So, I have the proclamation here that I'm gonna present to the members of the Disability Advisory Committee. Before I do, I just want to talk about disability awareness in general and how it's affected me. As an able-bodied person with my senses intact, it's easy to not consider the struggles and some of the obstacles that folks who have disabilities of whatever kind go through on a daily basis. And a real eye-opener for that, for me, it was been serving on the Paratransit Board of Directors, where we are providing transportation services to people who have no way to get around without it. And they require that for going to church, for seeing friends, for shopping, for their doctor's appointments, everything. And so it's not just a social program, it's an absolute instrument of being able to live their life. And one way that it's affected me is that whenever I'm asked to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, I used to say, "Please stand," or "Please rise." And now I recognize that for some people, they cannot do that, and so I'll say, "Address the flag." So that's disability awareness. And I just want to say that whereas the month of October 2018 has been designated as Disability Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize individuals with disabilities, and whereas disability in no way diminishes the right of individuals to live independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of American society, and whereas family members, friends, and members of the community can play a vital role in enhancing the lives of individuals with disabilities, especially when the family and community are provided with necessary support services, and public and private employers are aware of the capabilities of people with disabilities to be engaged in competitive work in inclusive settings, and whereas the goals of this city include providing individuals with disabilities the opportunities to support and support to make informed choices and decisions, live in homes and communities where they can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens, pursue meaningful and productive lives, contribute to their family, community, state, and nation, and achieve full inclusion in society. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims October 2018 as Disability Awareness Month in the City of Elk Grove, and asks the community to join in honoring individuals with disabilities. And I present this to you.
And I think, sorry, members of the DAC, I think we want to keep you up there, because we're going on to item 4.3, which is proclamation declaring October 15th, 2018, is White Cane Safety Day.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you. So, our eyesight is something that many of us take for granted, and, but despite, you know, if you don't have your eyesight or can't see well, having the right support services with you can enable you to live a full and full life. So today, though, is a reminder for those of us who may not be as, or may be more fortunate to look out for those if you see that white cane or if you see that guide dog, to take some time and care for your fellow person. Today is White Cane Safety Day. Whereas the white cane or guide dog, which every blind citizen of Elk Grove has the right to use, demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life, to work productively in competitive employment, and to move freely and safely from place to place, making it possible for the blind to fully participate in and contribute to our society. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires a motorist to exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane or using a guide dog. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaim October 15th, 2018, as White Cane Safety Day in the City of Elk Grove for the purpose of bringing a greater understanding of blindness and what it means to be blind to the citizens of Elk Grove, and call upon our schools to offer full opportunities for training to blind persons. Public and private employers to utilize the available skills and competent blind society, and all citizens to recognize the white cane and guide dog as instruments of safety and self-help for blind pedestrians in our streets and highways. Thank you very much for all the work you do on our board. Thank you.
I'll take this, item 4.4, which is a presentation of a certificate of recognition to Orlando Martinez for his courage and assistance to aid a fellow resident.
Orlando, will you join me at the podium, please? First of all, for those of you who aren't aware, there was an incident a few weeks ago where a young man was being jumped by four other older boys, and Orlando stepped in. And I had a chance to talk to his father, and I've raised three sons myself, so I told his dad, you know, "You gotta be really proud of this young man." He stopped when he saw what was going on, got out of his car, started yelling at these guys, and he's a pretty good-sized guy, scared him off. They jumped in their car and took off. But, you know, there was a lot of people that would have just driven by or say, you know, maybe called 911 or done something, but he actually intervened. And when I talked to his dad, I said, you know, "It would be really an honor for us to have him come in, because he's a role model, not only from his family, but all other young men and women." And I can't tell you how proud I am in the city council, and to have you here tonight, we wanted to give you with a special certificate. I'm gonna read it real quick. So this is a certificate of recognition presented to Orlando Martinez for his courage, assistance, and what he displayed on September 28th, 2018. An eighth-grade student biking home from school was accosted and attacked by a group of teenagers in the neighborhood of Elk Grove, and the young victim fended off the attacks, but the assault continued. And as his possessions were being taken by the assailants, he became fearful that his life may be in danger. And Orlando Martinez was driving by the neighborhood and saw the events of the robbery unfold, yelling at the group to stop the commotion and impose himself into the situation to get the attackers to stop. The suspects were alarmed by the actions of Orlando and retreated away from the scene. The incident was captured on surveillance video, and with the cooperation of the victim and the eyewitnesses to the encounter, arrests were made of the four suspects involved. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the City of Elk Grove hereby recognizes and commends Orlando Martinez for his courage, perseverance, presence of mind, and valiant efforts displayed on September 28th, 2018 to intervene and avert tragedy, ensuring the safety of a fellow resident of Elk Grove. Signed this day, October 10th, by the entire city council.
Congratulations. I'd like to have the entire city council come down.
Orlando, we've got one other little thing here that was actually slipped over to me, and I think this is appropriate. It's a pin of the City of Elk Grove, so I'm gonna put it on you here. Honorary member of the city council.
Good job, Oily.
Just like a true hero, walks away without the fanfare, right? Orlando, I said it just the other day, but really, you're an exemplary student. You're somebody that we hope that other students will model themselves after, and your action, even though as humble as you are, you've said that it's something that anyone would do, and I think that really, again, is exemplary of who you are and what your character represents. But a lot of it also needs to be extended to your parents, your grandparents, and everyone who has mentored you. Obviously, you guys were raised as kids, right? And, you know, I hope that other people see you and model themselves after you. The other day, I said, and I'll say it again tonight, bad things happen when good people stand and don't do anything, and you're somebody who actually did something, and that is, you know, stellar. So, congratulations for doing the right thing, and thank you so much.
Oily, I also want to commend you for your actions. You know, you're the same age as some of the assailants, so, you know, for what happened, you definitely showed what the other side, what the good side can look like, and so thank you very much for your actions and setting an example for your peers.
I'll just add that the world would be a better place if there were more Orlando Martinuses and less of those other punks.
Absolutely.
Oily.
I do have to make a kind of a little funny comment that the vice mayor, when we awarded you the other night, and we were up there taking pictures, found out that he's a right guard for the Franklin Football Team. I played right guard when I played. Vice mayor says, "Why are you so much smaller?"
All right, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Take this, item 4.5, which is a proclamation declaring October 2018 as Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month.
All right, I'd like to invite Dean Peckman to come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of the Elk Grove City Council. My name is Dean Peckham. I'm the executive director of the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Initiative. On behalf of the 2,700 manufacturers in the Sacramento region and the 35,000 employees who work for those manufacturers, first of all, I really want to say thank you for taking the time out to recognize the value of manufacturing through this proclamation. Really means a lot to everybody in the region and the efforts that we're undertaking. We are actually a fairly new organization. We were just created in April of 2018. We're a small, dynamic, but very active organization focused on the development of a regional workforce to meet the complex needs of a 21st century manufacturing. We're comprised of manufacturers, educators, and industry partners, including our local workforce development boards. We're trying to bring career technical education and training opportunities to the region to create the workforce of the future that will enable the manufacturers in our community to be successful and thrive and compete in a global marketplace. And we do know that it's a global marketplace right now. Our organization is focused on four critical areas. Those include education through our alignment with the high schools, community colleges, universities, workforce development, identifying critical occupations and skill sets, and implementing training programs around those occupations, including computer numerically controlled machinists, welding and fabrication, quality control inspection, industrial maintenance, food processing, medical device manufacturing, and mechanical assembly in our region. We're also focused on business-to-business development, supporting the manufacturers by providing them the resources that they need to be successful. And last, but certainly not least, communication and branding, because it's vitally important, we know, to raise the awareness of career opportunities in manufacturing to the young people today, to their parents, with you, the elected officials, and also with the media, and put forth those stories that illustrate that manufacturing is a very dynamic, interesting career opportunity that young people can proceed into right out of high school, go to community college. Two years of community college, you're definitely making a living wage and you're able to sustain you and your family. Right now, as you recognize, this is manufacturing awareness month. We have a lot of activities going on in Sacramento region. We are visiting 10 high schools in the region to talk to students about career opportunities in manufacturing. In fact, today, Siemens, as everybody knows, local manufacturer just up the road, was at the Valley High School Career Fair. There will also be presenting to Florin High School, Laguna Creek High School. Then we're hosting six tours of local manufacturers. In fact, there is a tour of Siemens tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. We participated in the, what's it called, the Rockland Minemaker Fair last weekend at Sierra College, which is an opportunity for the people who like to make things to come and illustrate what they can do, and an opportunity for kids to see that there are really interesting things out there in manufacturing, through robotics, et cetera. We had six manufacturers participating in that. And then we're out talking to the councils, about, 12 councils in the region, about career opportunities in manufacturing. And I would like to really highlight the valuable partnership that we already have with Elk Grove Unified School District and their career technical education program. We've had instructors go through our Train the Trainer program where we've taken high school instructors out to the manufacturing shop to learn about manufacturing techniques so that they can go back and apply those in their classroom. Laguna Creek just upgraded their manufacturing technology program through new equipment. We've had staff at Casuma Stokes High School, Valley, as well as an ongoing relationship between Sacramento, between Siemens and Florin High School. At this point, I would like to turn the dice over to Carrie Adams Hayes, who is with Universal Custom Display, a local Elk Grove manufacturer.
Thanks. Thanks. As he just, oh, as he just mentioned, I'm Carrie Adams Hayes. I work with Universal Custom Display. And on behalf of UCD and all the Elk Grove manufacturers, we'd just like to thank you, you, mayor, and council members for having us and recognizing this as manufacturing awareness week and recognition. Real quick about Universal Custom Display, we're a full-service manufacturing company servicing retail, commercial, and residential worlds. We were founded in 1999 by my father-in-law and mother-in-law, who are local to Elk Grove. And today we have 200 employees and still operate and are located right here in Elk Grove off the 91 freeway, like, right down the road. All this wouldn't be possible, though, without our continued relationship between the city and UCD. Our company was able to recently add 5,200 square feet of warehousing space to one of our buildings. And through the help of, or the collaboration between Daryl and the Elk Grove Building Department, we were able to work through some agonizing permitting issues to allow this expansion to happen. And it's been really critical to our company's growth and our capacity, and most importantly, the ability to keep more jobs local now that we have more space. The city went out of its way to ensure we could get this done, and even went as far to help financially with the mitigation of some of the permitting fees, which can be a little high. So today, we're using the space, and we can't imagine where we'd be if we didn't have it, especially with winter coming and this now being an even bigger space to warehouse and work. And it's just a perfect example of what can be accomplished when the city and a private industry come together on a common goal and a willingness to work together to make something happen. So thank you again.
Thank you.
So what we have here is a proclamation declaring manufacturing awareness and appreciation month, October 2018. Manufacturing Day is celebrated nationally on the first Friday of the month of October to showcase facilities in an effort to educate the community about manufacturing career opportunities. And manufacturers provide over 35,000 jobs for the Sacramento region, 12,480,000 jobs nationwide. And over the next decade, nearly 3.5 million manufacturing jobs will likely be needed, and 2 million are expected to go unfilled due to the skill gap. Manufacturing is the most important industry in the United States, contributing nearly $2.2 trillion to our economy, and for every dollar spent, another $1.89 is added to the economy. And for every manufacturing worker hired, there are another four employers hired in an adjacent market. And increasing the exposure of manufacturing careers within our local area to our students, educators, business owners, media, and community is needed to bridge the gap in skilled labor shortage and create viable career pathways for students and adults. And Elk Grove supports all efforts to bring manufacturers and educational systems together to promote careers within the manufacturing field. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Elk Grove hereby proclaims October 2018 as manufacturing awareness and appreciation month in the city of Elk Grove, and expresses appreciation to all manufacturers and commend them for their commitment to the betterment of Elk Grove and the regional community. I present this to you. Thank you very much, and this is certainly consistent with the city council has been pushing forward. And Jason will be calling you to join us in a meeting, so, there you go, sir.
All righty.
You can run to the center.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Take us on to item 4.6, the multicultural committee annual update to the city council.
Honorable Mayor Lee and members of the city council, good evening. I bring you greetings from the multicultural committee. And as a token... I bring you greetings from the multicultural committee. And as a token of our appreciation for your support for our mission, you have in front of you a calendar for next year, a year of celebration. This calendar contains photographs of some of the highlights of our festival. And this is in appreciation of all the support that you have provided us. The multicultural committee is a 10-member-appointed committee, supported by the city staff, was first constituted and convened by the city council in September 2011. This evening, I have the distinct pleasure of addressing this august body to briefly update you on how the committee has diligently endeavored to meet the challenges of the charged responsibilities bestowed upon us. And it includes organizing and presenting the annual multicultural festival, educating the community about the Elk Grove's diversity, reaching out to the ethnic and base, faith-based communities, providing guidance to the council on issues impacting multicultural communities. This evening, I am pleased to report that in 2018, the committee planned and implemented activities, events, that successfully accomplished a number of positive outcomes, promoting, protecting, and preserving the rights, the freedoms, the safety, and the security of all Elk Grove citizens, and recognizing the diverse contribution of all its citizens, both immigrants and native-born. We, as members, all completed and participated in the implicit bias training from the American leadership forum. We finalized and adopted a new sister-city application process. Diversity Month proclamation and events were held in the month of August. And finally, we have our Elk Grove Multicultural Festival. The diversity month was the prelude to the multicultural festival. 10 activities, events were offered to the Elk Grove citizens of all ages, and the goal was for each participant to experience, share in, and to appreciate Elk Grove's multicultural heritage. We were pleased to present a number of activities primarily designed for children. We wanted children to become part of our greater community because they are going to be the future citizens of our community. The highlight of 2018 was the multicultural festival. It was the showcasing and celebration of our multicultural heritage. Ethnic music and dance, art exhibit, religio-cultural exhibits, diverse food offerings, children's activities, informational booths, Corvette auto show, among others, impressed the festival attendees of our rich, dynamic, and vibrant cultural heritage. Here is a short video to illustrate the richness of our community. An estimated 10,285 attendees of all ages, abilities, races, cultures, classes, creeds, gender, sex, religion, experience Elk Grove's rich cultural diversity proudly displayed at the festival. We are also grateful, we are also grateful in the successes of the 2018 festival would not have been possible without the generosity of our business sponsors who contributed over $43,400 to fund the festival. We are also grateful to hundreds of our volunteers whose expended energies, overwhelming enthusiasm, and a commitment to community service are the realization of the cause for a more humane society where there is no place for hate. Our next event is the celebration of the Festival of Lights, Tuesday, October 30th, 2018, at the Laguna Town Hall. Deeply rooted in the South Asian culture, Festival of Light expresses the universal value that celebrates victory of light over darkness, knowledge over ignorance, and good over evil. Such universal values are the hallmark and the foundation of all civil societies. Finally, I am confident that my colleagues on the multicultural committee will concur with my sentiments, that we are privileged and deeply honored to serve the city of Elk Grove, and are positioned at the forefront of the transformative changes slowly evolving within our community. As a community, Elk Grove remains steadfastly many cultures, one community, rich, dynamic, and vibrant. We are proud, we are profoundly proud, of the unity in our diversity. Thank you. We welcome your comments, be more than happy to entertain your questions and address your concerns.
Questions?
No questions, but I do want to thank you all for your, for your work this past year, and especially thank you for investing additional time to complete the implicit bias training. I think it's really important and happy that you guys were, participated in that. Thank you.
I just want to add that I think one of the best things about Elk Grove is our diversity. That really is our strength, and the fact that the multicultural committee continues to, to push this and perpetuate these different activities, it really is a good starting point. You know, there are, there are others who have criticized that this committee is not effective. I disagree with that completely. I think every effort that you guys have put forward has been spectacular, you know, stemming from the events that build up to this multicultural festival, which is so meaningful for our community. And having the different culture, different ethnic group come out and share what makes them special is really what highlights Elk Grove. So thank you very much for your efforts, and I, I'm glad that you continue to push this. Thank you.
Yeah, I have to agree with everything that's been said. You know, this has always been something very, very special and dear to my heart. This goes back to 2011, and I don't want it to go unnoticed that Newton Ekbo was the one who had the original vision back in, he started actually probably in around 2008. And this finally came to fruition in 2011 by the collaboration of the city council to make it a, a city committee. And Newton was actually appointed as the, the first commissioner and passed away shortly after. So I never want to forget the vision that he had, and to see what is, his basic concept idea was, what it's blossomed to with the efforts of this multicultural committee over the last seven years is unbelievable. And I can't thank you enough because every time I see what you do, it just makes me value what we have here in Elk Grove that much more and cherish the people that we have. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you do.
Thank you, councilman.
Excellent. Yeah, appreciated. All right, next item.
Take us to section five, public comment.
And we have a number of speakers lined up to speak. First speaker is Boyce Jeffries. Following Boyce is Larry Naas.
Hate to throw a curveball at you since you've had such a positive meeting this evening, and good evening...
And good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'd like to publicly thank the city clerk, specifically Ms. Haggard, for the information they've been giving to me. What I'm here this evening about is the PPZ on Mini-Circle, okay? And I'm very upset the way it was handled by city staff. I received a letter on July 17 saying there's going to be a PPZ in our neighborhood Monday through Friday, 8 to 4 p.m., okay? No notification prior to this. Somebody had circulated a petition, okay, in the neighborhood, which I didn't sign, never saw until I asked for the staff report for that. And I sent an email, I believe, to you councilmembers on July 23 asking the item to be pulled. You responded, Mayor. I think you gave me a call and I appreciate that. And that was it, okay? And you're going to try. Well, for that meeting, I was only going to have two words. From two words is onto this. And I'll tell you the two words at the end of my presentation. Now, I'm only allowed three minutes because I have more to cover. I'll go over real quick or I'll come back to another meeting.
If you can summarize and whatever you have.
Okay, well, summarize it, okay? Number one, no meeting by city staff was conducted in the neighborhood like in other PPZs that were done. But yet they had time to come out on August 10 and hand out the permits from 4 to 6 o'clock. They had time to be Santa Claus to give the permits out, but not to inform the residents, okay? In the staff report, July 25, okay, staff says parking problems in front of their homes due to overflow parking. There is no overflow parking at Elk Grove High. They have plenty of parking. The rumor had it that the students had to pay for the parking. That's why they parked on Mini-Circle and hell's bells, there's only about six to eight cars on our street. And I said in that email, you're going to relocate the problem, which you did. You relocated the problem to Ahmad Vista Garden and Valley Oaks. In fact, a guy on Valley Oaks puts cones out in front of his yard now, okay? So you didn't address the problem. You relocated the problem, just like I said in the email. Okay, let's go to the ordinance. Okay, your first one was done over in Franklin High School, okay? That was your first one that was done. And it says in your ordinance, your ordinance that you approved of, maybe a prior council, "The director shall undertake voting surveys of the residences." I asked, no survey was conducted. No survey was conducted. In lieu of a survey, it's a petition. A petition. Apple, orange, petition, survey. Okay, I have a sample survey to give to the director if he needs some help in doing a survey, okay? In that capacity. Also, to pay for this, in the staff report for Franklin High, it says maintenance funds, gas tax, Measure A, or street maintenance zones, as appropriate. Some of those funds are restricted. I asked, where was the cost going to come out of? Haven't received an answer yet on that.
So, Mr. Jeffries, you're over time. But may I suggest that, Jason, can you delegate whoever is necessary to meet with Mr. Jeffries?
Well, no, I think, Mayor, there's some other important things that need to be discussed.
Sure, you can summarize it, yeah.
Like the tracking record, okay? There was a tracking record where licenses and tags were given. There's no tracking record for Mini-Circle, you know? So what I'd really like to do, put this on a future agenda item to really discuss it.
So may I suggest a meeting with proper staff first before we move forward?
Can I have an agenda item in a future council meeting?
Well, there's a process for us to do that. And I think that this may be a little bit premature to move in that direction. How about we do that? We have a meeting first and then if it's necessary?
Sure, we'll have meetings. I love meetings. I love meetings. But one thing I'd like to top it off with, okay? Here's the stickers. Nice, huh? Think so? Okay. Well, you know where you got the stickers from? Do you know? Anybody know? Came all the way from New York. And you know what we paid? Or the city paid? Okay, for this one right here, okay? $14.20 apiece. We bought 25 of these. These, these are only 10 bucks. 10 bucks. So for a total of 35 stickers, we paid $455. It probably coincides with the parking fees they charge in New York City because they charge so much, they can charge more for the stickers. Don't we shop local here? Don't you support local businesses? But to go to New York? That's ludicrous.
So thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Your time is over.
Boyce, before you leave the podium though, can I... I want to know what the two words were.
What, the two words?
Yeah.
To put on the sign? School days. Because you have a sign right there. You can't park there when it's summer vacation. There's no school. So do it like you did over at Franklin. Put down there, "School days." Because hell's bells, Christmas Eve's on a Monday, Christmas Day's on a Tuesday. I mow my Christmas, you have people come and buy your house unexpectedly. Where in the hell am I going to get a parking permit, a guest? You know, I mean, user-friendly customer service. And just don't have some resident who's selling chocolate candies go door-to-door for a petition.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Larry Neas. Larry, come on down. And Jason, if you could connect with Mr. Jeffries.
Just to note that Mr. Neas did submit PowerPoint presentations. He did submit them in accordance with our 24-hour policy and I believe he's pulling those up right now.
Yeah, I think you've got them all. My name is Larry Neas and just FYI, I need glasses to see where the heck it is.
Just a little bit higher and you'll get there.
Where do I get the slideshow? Come on. Oh, there we are. Sorry.
Bingo.
We've lived out in Elk Grove now for 10 years. Recently retired from Lockheed Martin in Palo Alto. I worked at the research lab. My responsibility was developing cryogenic coolers for spaceflight instrumentation. The good news is this discussion has absolutely nothing to do with that.
I'd like to hear more about it.
We could talk about it if you like. But anyway, we have a neighborhood watch group that joined primarily for the Constellation Park area. And they were pretty active for a while. And I got involved in that and what we did was we tracked the crime in the area. And I started doing this in like the 2016 time period. And we have some interested people. And what I will do is I will send that out to the people who signed up by email. And lately, in concert with some of the work that Nathan's been doing, with some of the feedback that I've got, they've wanted to see trends. And so I've been plotting some trends as well. And what we've found is, just to give a bottom line, is over the last 24 months, it's been pretty flat, not too bad. But that also reflects a significant increase from years prior to that. And about that same time, we noticed that there was an increase of about 13% in police. And so the question is, are we keeping up the crime rate? We want to, you know, basically, you know, I'm here to support the crime, the police. I'm not going to go over any of these things in detail. You got them, you can take a look at them. But this is the neighborhood within which we share the report. I identify the stuff that's basically of interest to me, being parochial. I live very close to Constellation Park, so that's the dark yellow there. And so we summarize that stuff. Then also gone in and I've identified neighborhood zones, which is in blue. And then, since we got to go to the store and buy stuff, that's the red, some more, your business areas, if you will. And what we do is we track that by crime rate. And again, this is from crimereports.com. I don't try to do anything with the data. I don't massage the data. I just pull the data off the computer. What I do do though is typically I don't do it on the first of the next month. What I do is I wait about a week or so, let some of the high-frequency noise get off the line, and what I do is I document it at that point. And we create plots. And I'm not going to go through all this stuff, but we basically try to keep track of the different, by the crime rate as a function of time, by partitioned out by the types of crime. You can see theft is by far the biggest one. Theft being larceny, car theft, which is amazing. We have a lot of car thieves around here. Theft from cars. And we have a lot of forgery and counterfeiting. And I guess that runs true to me because I'm a victim. And this is more partitioning by zones. And then what I did was I basically counted everything out. This is a total. And it doesn't distinguish between an assault or drunken disorder late. It's the total events that happened. And what you can see is that... How did that happen so quickly?
You can just summarize, please wrap it up.
Thank you. We are pretty flat. This is over the last 24 months. But here's the same data and this goes back a little bit further now, back into the early timeframe. And you can see that what we've done is we've had kind of a step function, if you will, increase in the 2016 timeframe and then that brought it up to that. And so the question is, is that, okay, fine, we've gone to a different plateau and we've increased the amount of police and that's helped out quite a bit. But could we be doing more to bring the crime rate back down, if you will? And so the summary on this is, yeah, yeah, verily. We've been pretty flat over the last two years. And by the way, I made that chart showing that specifically because I had a meeting with Officer Albright. He pointed out the fact that the crime rate was pretty much flat in the last two years and so we acknowledge that as well. But still, we'd like to see a little bit of higher police rate.
It's actually Captain Albright. You just demoted him.
Can we say king? I don't know the titles, guys, sorry. Anyway, personal story. This also hit me. Evidently, I'm able to get loans in Pennsylvania, Michigan, and all sorts of places because I've had my identity stolen. But I actually had one that was stolen. It was pretty local, too. It was a PayPal loan over here by Costco. And I reported it, well, LifeLock found out about it. I reported it and I said, you know, jeez, what I'd like to do is I'd like to put the cuffs on this guy and let's go through it and, you know, let's give the guy the money and then let's lock the guy up. But the response was we just didn't have the resources to do that. And I can understand that, too. But the comments were, we don't have the resources, detectives are overbooked. And so, you know, the way I look at it, I'd like to see people put in jail for things if they're doing things wrong. I'm going to go over real quickly here, these guys here. This is basically themes that we appreciate some police officers' actions on the street. The first one basically shows a corner in our neighborhood. And as you can see, some guys just love the fire hydrant. And they just, I think they were totally in love with the doggone thing, but we just couldn't get them away from it. Funny thing is, is that if you take a look at this car on the red over here, that's the only car in any of these pictures of cars on the street that aren't associated with one house. And that house is a rental. There are five couples live there. And they have a lot of fun stuff there.
So I hate to interrupt you, but you've gone over 2 minutes and 43 seconds. Can you wrap it up, please?
Thank you, officer, whoever did it, because he cleaned it up. And I want to thank Councilmember Hume here because I sent him these charts and I pointed out the fact that we had a water leak. And just because of the fact that I sent this to him, we had somebody out there the next day repairing that line. So I take full responsibility for making that happen. So there you go. All right, that's all, guys.
That's funny, Councilman Hume took responsibility.
Well, he and I are going to have to fight over who's responsible.
Hey, if you can't beat me up, shut up. That's what the sticker on the car said.
You want me to go back to that one? That was different. Yeah, I know. That's exactly what that one said right there. Okay, guys, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Frank Freno. Following Frank is Nathan Champion.
How do I get out of here?
We'll take care of that, Mr. Neas. I got it.
I never had to do it. Look at my glasses this way.
I'm here about the drainage ditch on my property. You guys probably figured that out. I met with Mr. Hobbs and Mr. Berman. For those out there in the viewing public that don't know, I've been dealing with a problem with the city of Elk Grove since 2016. Because they failed to act, they flooded my house and continue to flood my property. Back to my meeting with Mr. Berman and Mr. Hobbs. I want the work finished on my property. The roadway to the back of my property needs to be finished. The pipes need to be installed correctly to prevent backflow onto my property. These are things that were damaged and created by the work that the city of Elk Grove did in relation to the work that they conducted in the easement ditch. August 10, 2017, I signed a contract with the city of Elk Grove. In part, it stated, "If existing improvements will be disturbed within the area used, the city will do the following. The city shall leave the area in good condition and shall employ all reasonable efforts to restore the area to its existing condition immediately, prior to such entry by the city." I brought a lot of issues to you guys and both you three, Mr. Dietrich, Mr. Lee, and Mr. Soon. I appreciate you guys coming out, getting involved. It seems like you were able to take everything into consideration. And I thought we were where we needed to be. Problem I have is with the liability. There's no reason I should have to accept the liability for the work the city of Elk Grove has done. Purely common sense says don't accept the liability because this started in 2016. And your people have still not been able to fix the problem. My property continues to flood. The hole that you got, the approximately 30-foot hole that you dug in my easement ditch just ran out of the water that it was holding in September, the beginning of September, okay? So what the city has done has made the problem worse for me and my property. After all efforts failed with the Public Works Director, the city manager came to my property. She agreed the city of Elk Grove would return and install a 13-foot roadway to the back of my property to repair the poorly rebuilt roadway, which was narrow, listing, and an unstable path. Contractors won't go over this roadway, okay? We have a fire hazard back there. Code enforcement has come to me. What am I to do? I can't get contractors back there to clean it up and take care of it because I have an unsafe roadway, okay? I'm in a pickle with you folks, okay? I can't solve this, okay? Mr. Berman, Mr. Hobbs offered to me, bring in your own contractor. Have your contractor take care of it. We'll go ahead and pay for it. Hey, that sounds like a great idea. Until after the fact, I realized, well, I still get the liability for this work. Your contracts that you guys have sent me in the past ask me to take liability and responsibility for the work that the city does for everybody upstream and downstream that could become flooded. I'm not going to do that. I can't do that. I heard the buzzer, so I'm just going to skip to the end here. I believe we have an agreement. I think we addressed all the problems on my property and as they relate to what the city has done and what the city can do and is willing to do. Our sticking point is liability. I'm not taking the liability for the city's work. And where we are right now is... This problem is one that's created by the city of Elk Grove in total. I have done nothing there. We need to get the overly discussed and required work taken care of before winter, okay? The city has put me in a situation of quid pro quo, a governmental quid pro quo. And I'm not having it. I'm not going to participate in it, okay? This is going to... This is going to cost the city, as well as me, money, okay, if we don't resolve it like grown adults. I did not damage my property. The city failed to act, which caused my flood, my property to flood, okay? Not just my house, but my property. My house is fine. My property continues to flood. And by the looks of the work, and I was notified that you guys said you guys were done for the third or fourth time out there, I can go back there and walk and look at that drainage easement ditch, and I can tell you, the property is still going to backflow on into my property.
Please wrap it up.
I'm wrapping it up.
Thank you.
Okay? I've tried calling, I've communicated with you folks. I want the work completed by winter, okay? I don't want to go through this anymore. If it's not completed by winter, I'll take that as your decision, okay? I look forward to hearing from any of y'all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Nathan Champion. Following Nathan is Roberta Low Taylor.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, City Staff, thank you. I want to start off by thanking you for what you guys have done really well with my neighborhood. A lot of staff work going into dealing with the problem house that we have in our neighborhood. Part of dealing with that started getting me researching into police staffing levels and crime rates because of my perception that violent crime, despite, you know, general decreases in crime of about 2% year-over-year, what I'm seeing in data is that we actually have violent crime, a subset, you know, of the general crime, violent crime's on the rise. The data that I have from the FBI Uniform Crime Reports shows an increase from 2016 when compared with the Elk Grove Police Department annual report, shows that aggravated assaults are up 5.4% from 2016 to 17. I also experienced a lot of slow response times and reluctance of police officers to take reports when I needed to make a call or wanted to file a police report. You know, obviously, police times, police response times are slower when there's not enough police to handle all the calls that are coming in. I really like our police department, and in no way am I trying to insinuate that we have, like, lazy police officers or something. I just think that there's way too many calls, and, you know, they get backed up and are going from call to call to call, and if you're not the highest priority call, then you can wait for hours or maybe a day and a half. So I conducted an analysis of the Uniform Crime Reporting Data from the FBI, and I gave that to Ms. Brenda Haggard to have on file for your review. What I found is, is that Elk Grove is average for violent crime in 2016. They're 17 out of 39 when we compare similarly-sized cities in California, that they have more aggravated assaults in 75% of similarly-sized cities and 60% of all the, when compared with all the cities that report. I did just have a discussion with the police chief right before this meeting, where he let me know that based on some analysis or review of data that they did today, that he believes that the Elk Grove Police Department is over-reporting, and that some of that aggravated assault data is information that is not required by law or by definition to be reported. But get to the staffing, since my time's about up already. In 2016, Elk Grove had 128 officers, according to these reports, which is .75 officers per 1,000 residents. That was the least number of police per capita out of all similarly-sized cities in California. It's 2018 now, and the data shows that there's 146 officers currently, which is .84 officers per 1,000, which, if we compare it to the rest of the city's 2016 data, shows that we're now tied for the number-two spot for the least number of police officers of similarly-sized cities. I heard somebody say, yeah, but we have a lot of civilian staff and stuff like that. So in 2016, our Elk Grove Police Department had 243 total staff, so that's police officers plus civilian staff, which placed us at number seven out of 39, so in the bottom 20% of all similarly-sized city police staffing. Now, in 2018, we have 146 officers plus 86 civilians, is the last thing that I saw on your guys' website, for 232 staff, which puts us at 1.34 staff members per 1,000 residents. So that puts us at, when compared with 2016 data of the other cities, puts us at number 10 out of 39 for total staffing, in the bottom 25%. So what I'm asking of the city is to take a really hard look at our officer staffing. I believe that we need to support our Elk Grove Police Department with the correct number of people. I have heard, because I've had many conversations with some of the city council members and also with the police department, I've heard that we have a plan to hire four officers per year, but our city is going to be reaching 200,000 population really soon. At 200,000 people, to achieve a .95 ratio of officers to residents, which is about what Roseville has, we need 190 sworn officers. And we're currently at 146, so it's quite a deficit. I don't think we're going to make it there by hiring four officers per year. So in summary, what I'm asking is for the city council to maybe do a fully transparent report back to the constituents as to where our staffing levels are, what our population's projected to be, what the city council thinks an appropriate ratio of police officers to residents is, and what the plan is for us to get there, if that would be okay.
Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'd like to direct a question to Chief Knoblauch, if he could speak to some of these points.
Where would you like me to start, Vice Mayor? That was quite a package of information.
Well, I mean, from the budget, you and I have had conversations before about staffing plans, and so maybe we could shed some light on how you go about planning the staff, and then, you know, how you recommend the rate of staffing to the council for adoption in the budget each year, and what your challenges are, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. And I did, Mr. Champion and I have met previously, and we've talked through some of these things as well, but for the benefit of everybody else that's here, I'd be happy to go into that. So a couple of years ago, in 2016, the police department commissioned a staffing study through the University of North Texas, and we actually hired these consultants to come in and to look at our operation at the time, and as well as take a look into the future, projecting not just growth of the department, but they looked at our services that we provide to, and compared those against industry standards and other studies that they had done throughout the country, to not just look at, you know, how we need to grow, but how we actually function. So as it relates to growth, because I think that's really what we're talking about here tonight, they, what they recommended was that we did need to add staff, and that we were, in fact, undersized for a city our size. And I don't think that's any, comes as any secret to anyone, we've all had discussions about our staffing. So the staffing study presented to us about a five-to-six-year plan for growth, for strategic incremental growth that would eventually get us to a point that they felt was appropriate. And that took into consideration that, and I think it was, let me find it here, in 2021, they projected a population in the city of 200,000. So that's, that seems to be pretty accurate. What that translated to was a staff additions for the police department amongst the sworn ranks of somewhere between three and five per fiscal year, and the requisite amount of support staff to support the patrol function. So we've done that. This current fiscal year that we began in July, if memory serves correctly, I think we added, we added five sworn positions, so, and we've had similar numbers in previous years, they've been albeit slightly smaller, but the plan going forward is to continue to request that we add probably between three and five sworn positions per year, and again, the requisite amount of support staff. I will state for the record that, you know, one of the issues that we have with respect to staffing is space. We've talked about this as well, and Mr. Champion and I discussed this in our meeting also. It's, as we add staff, we have to have someplace to put them. And so we are undergoing that analysis right now. The city and the city manager's been very supportive of this, and we've, you know, we've hired a consultant to look at our space needs. That analysis is underway. In fact, I have a meeting, I think, tomorrow with the consultant, and so that's happening as we speak. We recognize that as compared to other cities, we have less sworn officers per capita. That's a fact. But the, you know, the measure of one per thousand is, that used to be a pretty good measurement. And I guess in a, in a, in a real quick, you know, thumbnail sketch way, it still is to some extent. But what we found is, we, for instance, we make good use of our community service officers. We have 15 CSOs at our department, which is more than a lot of other departments, and I have those numbers here if anybody's interested. But our community service officers, of those 15, 10 are assigned to patrol. And so they're uniformed CSOs, they don't carry guns, but they do go out and they handle reports that keep the gun-toting police officers free and available to respond to crimes in progress and crimes of violence and things of that nature. So the CSOs, we make more use of CSOs here, which, again, I'm not, I'm not explaining a lower sworn staff in that way, I'm just suggesting that the use of the CSOs does help keep those officers free and able to respond to calls for service. And, you know, I just have to say, as your, as your police chief, I've, you know, I was part of this study, I subscribe to this method of growth, especially considering our space issues. I agree, and I honestly, I appreciate, I've told him this to his face, and I'll say it again, I appreciate Mr. Champion and his support for the department, as well as Mr. Nace. I'm thankful that we're in a community where people are supportive of us and are willing to even come forward and say, hey, we need more police officers. I just am comfortable, again, as your police chief, with the method of growth that we've chosen to pursue. And, you know, to do it faster, if someone were to wave a wand tonight and say, here, chief, here's 20 police officers, that's, that might be a little bit more of a curse than a blessing. You know, we have to go out and we have to find those, we have to identify those candidates, we have to recruit them, we have to hire them, we have to send them to an academy. It's about an 18-month process, from the moment somebody applies to be a police officer until they get through their academy and field training, and make it to where we can give them a set of car keys and send them out into the community. And that's only if they make it. And so this, this, this more strategic incremental growth is something that I'm comfortable with, but I, but again, I don't want to diminish any of the community's concerns as it relates to crime. I'm also prepared to speak to that, to the aggravated assault question, should it come up.
Thank you, chief. And I do want to take a moment to acknowledge, you know, Mr. Champion, I also appreciate your sentiment and agree that I would love to see more officers, too, but recognize in concert with, we work in concert with the police chief and the study that he talked about. His recommendations, the conversations about having facility space so we can house them, all of that plays into, you know, the decision that was made and recommended to this past year's budget and what could be the foreseeable budget in the future. I would like to, you know, to Mr. Champion's point, though, about, maybe, maybe it just comes back to the ratio comment, because if you do five per year, we said three to five, so if you do five per year for the next six years, that's 30, you have 176 versus what we were talking about, a population of 200,000. And so I'm just going to say it in another way, which is, it sounds like that you're using the CSO officers that basically allow the efficiency of that 176 officers to look like, maybe what would be at 200 officers if you use that one per thousand ratio. Is that what you think?
Yes, I think that's, I think that's accurate. I would just, the CSOs definitely augment the sworn staff considerably. You know, I will say, when the staffing study was done, they really, they really, they used an analysis that, and again, I'm a police officer, I'm not a mathematician, so I struggle with those formulas and things that they use. But they didn't use a one per thousand, they didn't use a, or a one per, .95 per thousand, they used a formula that looked at response times and kind of the total patrol function to reach this recommendation. You know, and I will say, in total transparency and honesty, I mean, the recommendations that were made in the staffing study, we've not been able to keep up with completely. You know, so we are, you know, a bit in arrears, I would, I would say, as it relates to that study. And certainly, if it were the desire of the council to reach .95 or something of that nature, we would, we would need to ratchet up, you know, our staff additions going forward. But I, but I'm here to say, and again, to represent, that I'm comfortable with the growth that we've experienced thus far, notwithstanding some of the statistics that were presented earlier by the other speaker, you know, as we speak right now, and this is through September of this year, as compared to the same time period last year, overall persons crimes, crimes against persons are down 2.91%, almost 3%, and property crime is flat, so.
If I could have just one moment, if that'd be all right. CSOs, my understanding, are civilians, so that's included. When I brought forth the 2018 statistic of 146 officers plus 86 civilians equals 232 staff, when we compare that number to other cities in the area, so now I'm not talking about comparably-sized cities, I'm just talking about in our area, Elk Grove is 1.34 staff per 1,000, and that puts us in the bottom 25% of all similarly-sized cities. But let me read some of these 2016 statistics. This is total police staff, so I'm not separating out officers right now. Elk Grove in 2016 had 1.24 police staff per 1,000 residents. Roseville had 1.38 per 1,000. Citrus Heights had 1.52 per 1,000. Folsom had 1.22 per 1,000, which notably is the only city that had less overall police staff per 1,000 residents. Lodi had 1.49 police staff per 1,000 residents. Galt, 1.91 per 1,000 residents. Rockland, 1.27 per 1,000 residents. And Sacramento, 1.92 per 1,000 residents. It looks even worse if we look at just officers. I'm happy to provide all the data. I just created a Facebook page called Elk Grove Residents for Public Safety. I will be posting raw data as much as I can so that people can verify my work with open transparency, so that we're not encountering any errors due to my part. Of note, you know, as I just found out today, we have some errors being reported from the Elk Grove Police side. So we really need to take a hard look, and I believe I would like the city council to conduct like some sort of independent staffing study. We need to revalidate the numbers. If we were making decisions in 2016 based off of data that potentially was reported in error, then we don't have a good plan going forward, and my numbers show that we need more police officers.
Okay. Councilman Dietrich, and then Councilman Hume.
Yeah, Nathan, I really appreciate you coming in with all that. You know, first of all, we take this very serious. We've been huge...
We've been huge, huge supporters of our police department.
Absolutely.
You know, there's, it's just like every, it's just like your own home, there's certain, you have to, it's a balancing act. You know, they're one of our biggest expenditures in our budget, not, they're worth it, but there's, there's a place where you, something's got to give. We don't have enough money to take care of every single part of Elk Grove that we would like to at the highest level and we have to find a, a level that we can live with within our means. If we had more money that we could cover everything we need to do, we would do it. That's why the vice mayor had proposed a sales tax increase. Well, those are all kinds of things that, yet that would be another revenue stream, but we don't have that revenue now. As we have revenue neutrality coming more in our favor, we'll have a little bit more money. Costco going in, little more money. As these things develop, those things will help the situation. But, chief, when was the early release by the governor?
Prop 47.
Yep. What year was that?
Oh, that was 1516, I would say.
Yeah, so 1516, you know, we, we saw a bump in some of the crimes because they were turned out of jail, turned out of prison. So, you know, we're, we're trying to adjust for all those things, but as we sit up here, you have other agencies that impact us. School district decided to cut busing for schools, so we had to ramp up our bus system. You know, school district decided never to build swimming pools. Community comes to us, they want swimming pools. So, we've tried to help that. That's been on actually the burden of the Laguna Ridge folks with the Melrose fees. They're, they're actually supplemental paying to make that happen. We talk regularly with the chief on, on what we can do. We, we have a, a really robust VIP program. Not that they are doing actual police action, but they're, they help take reports, they're out in the community with police on their trucks, they, they do have communication with dispatch. So, there's, there's a lot of different eyes and ears out there. I think the plan we have right now is something within our means that we, we can live with. Somebody shakes a money tree out there and gets us some more money, we'll see what else we can do, but until then, I think this is the road we're going to have to be on. These were the same issues in 2006 when Councilman Hume got on the council. These were the same issues in 2008 when I got on the council. We're actually in a better place now than we were 10 years ago. Do we have more to go? Absolutely. But, you know, I can't, you know, as we, we have quite a few officers here tonight, I can't thank them enough for what they do because the quality of life that they help us maintain is, is not, it's no joke. So...
Councilman Hugh.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. First of all, Nathan, I, I want to thank you and Mr. Nace for coming out here. To the chief's point, I think it's wonderful that we live in a community where the people want more police, more law enforcement. That's a testament to, to Elk Grove. To Councilmember Detrick's point, we spend almost 60% of our general fund budget, which is our only discretionary spending, on our police department and, and associated equipment and, and services and such. We are trying to find more space, which is one of the constraints that the chief listed. We are trying to right-size the department in a, in a manageable way so that as these officers are onboarded, they have the correct amount of training, that the overall function of the department continues to, to work well and, and you don't all of a sudden have 20 new faces roaming the halls and nobody knows who they are. I think we do need to go back and scrub our data and put it through that, that matrix and see what comes out and then see if that radically alters our plan. I think you would do well to listen to what the chief's saying, that, that, that one per thousand metric is a little outdated and that there are other metrics that we can use to, to determine whether or not our, our, our police department is, is functioning efficiently, perhaps doing more with less. But, here's the, here's the deal, that I'll make this commitment to you. If the chief comes to me tomorrow and says, look, I got to ramp up our staffing by two extra officers, I'm going to, I'll find that money. I'll, you know, we'll work to do that.
You're here.
So, we're all on the same page with wanting the outcome, which is keeping our community safe. And I, I appreciate you being deliberate about that as well. I know you had a very unfortunate incident in your neighborhood, which kind of raised the specter and got you maybe a little bit fired up about it. So, thank you for sticking with it.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing that Councilman Hume said is, which is, chief, if you want to take another look and you find that after, you know, since 2016, you're seeing something different, you know, please let us know and I'm with Councilman Hume, I would adopt that in a heartbeat, that recommendation. There's a, but there is, I think, you know, I think all of us have seen, you know, whether it's on Nextdoor or, you know, there's a lot of people talking about when, when you have car break-ins or, or things like that and, and I think there is, there's concern, some concern in the community. And so, I also want to, you know, talk about is, if, if not more officers right now, I mean, what can we do? And I guess I'm going to ask you, chief, what can we do as, as a community and whether it's us on the dais or, or outreach into the community to, you know, make things safer? I mean, we've been talking about building a stronger community, having events to get, communities, you know, have, build that closer bond, but is there anything more that we can do besides adding officers?
Well, that's a, that's a great question and truthfully, I think we're on a good path with that. You know, look, we're, we're here in a public meeting tonight and we're having public comment from two residents who care enough about their community that they've come in to talk about it and we're having a prolonged discussion about public safety in Elk Grove. That's a good thing. I don't see that, in fact, I, I've, I've told him before, I, I view Mr. Champion as an ally, not, not an adversary.
No, absolutely.
I greatly appreciate his support. So, I think the fact that we're talking about it, our, our, our neighborhood watch system is robust, you know, we continue to look for ways to expand that. You all as a, as a group of elected officials are very supportive of our efforts. I, I know you work very hard in the community to, to, to remind folks to be mindful of, of public safety. So, I think that's, those parts are all good. To be honest, I think there are some things that we're looking to do and I'm just going to, I'll touch on this briefly so as not to prolong the discussion for too long. But, we, you know, we, we're, we're looking at how we do business as well, internal to the police department. We've recently hired, and this was, this was a result of a staffing study recommendation from that 2016 study, but we've recently added a second crime analyst. And, and the reason we did that is because I, I, what I'm really looking for and what we're driving internally and we're talking to our managers and supervisors about is, is ensuring that we have a, a really robust system of crime analysis and data that we're able to provide very timely data to the officers so that they are, they are very much aware of what's going on at a neighborhood level within the city. Often, when we talk about crime rates, we're talking about aggregate crime rates throughout the city as a whole. What we're really trying to drive is, is more geographic accountability, if you will, from our staff so that they not only have an awareness of what's going on in the various neighborhoods and the beats that they work on a very micro level, but that we're providing them with the data and the support internally and we align our systems to support those efforts in the field. That's a, that sounds like a very nebulous concept, I realize, but it's, 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 it's very doable. And, and frankly, you know, as we're about 12 years into our existence, I guess, here as a police department, so that makes us relatively new and I even admitted this to Mr. Champion when we met, you know, we, we do pretty well with what we have, but I think that we can do better, even with the systems that we have in place now. And, and I'm laying a lot on this new crime analyst, I don't mean to, but she's very dynamic and she's very good at what she does. And I think between, between that staff addition and really looking at our, our systems and how we deliver data and what our expectations are of our staff in the field, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that, that, that that's going to have a, a real impact on, on crime in the city as well. And all the while, if we continue to add staff at whatever rate we are all comfortable with and we decide, I, I think those things in concert, along with having a, a really engaged community, you know, we're going to, we're going to be okay. We, we, I, I feel like we're on a good path. Outside of sharing that, you know, that crime analysis information with you, I really, I'd be hard pressed to think of something else that I could ask you to do or ask the community to do, other than just stay together, stay plugged in. That's what community policing is all about. We can't do it by ourselves, we need Mr. Champion and we need his neighbors and, and Mr. Nace and his neighbors to work with us to make the city as, as safe as possible. So...
Chief, how does technology enter into the equation now?
Well, in a lot of ways. I mean, you know, often when we think about technology, we think about video cameras. We've had some discussions recently about, about video placement of cameras in the city. And, and frankly, we would like to expand the number of cameras in the city, but what we're up against now are network issues and, and basically, you know, kind of a bandwidth issue, if you will. And so, we're, we're working with our IT administrator and other staff to try to figure out a way because we could continue to add cameras, but if we don't have the network ability to, to weave them together and bring that here for us to be able to utilize, then they really, they're, they're just props out there and so, we need to find a way to do that. So, we're working on that. That's one piece of technology. I think as we move down this enhanced crime analysis path, we're going to be look to develop some, some internal, some dashboards, probably some apps even for our officers' smartphones for them to be able to really quickly be able to pull up the data that they need to be more efficient in the field. That's just a couple things.
Actually, real quick, before you answer that question, while I got on my mind, because, you know, both of you have taken such time to, to come here and, and the data. So, I want to, I want to find an action for you that, that we can, you know, get, get behind. And so, if my council colleagues would agree with me, I would request that the chief take, you know, take some time to go back, relook at the numbers, like kind of what we talked about, the data and do an all-encompassing review of if there's anything at the moment, if it's, in other words, we just talked about the, the expanding the, the data, you know, whether it's fiber or whatever, come back with those recommendations or that, you know, that we can, we can look at. And whether we adopt it or we're able to adopt it due to, you know, our budget today or not, we at least know what we want to do in the future and we have a, we have a plan. And while I have it on my mind, I was reminded, you know, a lot of folks talk about, when I, when I talk in the community, they just want to see a patrol car once in a while come by. And so, you know, how that can happen, it, it might be a, more CSOs or, you know, or somebody driving, just driving the car, frankly. So, whatever it would take to make that happen, that might be worthwhile to take a look at as well.
So, let me suggest this. I hear what you're saying, Vice Mayor, can we just have a consensus to bring this back to council? Have as an informative information item. I, I would be, you know, content with that. We're going to be talking all night long and this is above and beyond. I'm very grateful that you're here, the information that you provide is very informative, but at the same time, we need to be able to contrast with what the chief has to say. And the truth of it is that we are going to rely on the, the recommendation of our, you know, top cop. And he's saying he's comfortable at this point. In an ideal world, yes, we would like more officers, we want more protection. I would love to have a police officer at every door, but the reality of that, we have, is that we have limited resources and there's a balancing act, as you heard from many of the council members. So, if there's a consensus, I would love to see something come back.
Yeah, that's...
It's not an agendaized item.
And that's what we're, we're talking about suggestion, bringing it back, right?
Yeah, so let's, let's do that. And, thank you, sir. Thank you. So, let's just go ahead and do that and your time is obviously up. Our next speaker is Roberta, Roberta Low Taylor.
Good evening, mayor and councilman and chief noble. I gave you all copies of what I was suggesting as an agenda, basically ordinance for the city of Elk Grove. I'd like to do this in conjunction with our safety of our Elk Grove officers, the fire department, the EMTs. What we're having is a problem with a lot of times, and this is where Nathan and Mr. Nace have, with rentals that we have there on the property because we don't know who lives there, we don't know who that person is. So, it'd make a city ordinance that puts that name of that person on there so that when the dispatcher gets it, the owner comes up, the renter comes up, they can go, then go through the CLAS system, which I think, are you all familiar with CLAS? The crime, it's a, I'm sorry, I'm an IT person, so I do that. I worked at DMV, that horrible place, but I worked with the, I know, go ahead and laugh, but I know that the chief knows, I worked with CLAS, which is what the law enforcement uses to get all the wants and wars out for all the bad people. So, when they go out there on a call, they know exactly what they're coming up against. So, with this proposal, it would give them the opportunity and our fire department and our EMTs know what they're going to be coming up against when they go for different calls and all. And so, I'd like to take that into consideration and I would hope it'd help out Mr. Nathan, Nathan also with that, they needed to know because this also helps out in neighborhoods because I know I'm saying imposing a fine, but the fine can be used to staff our more Elk Grove PD because of the fact that they have to go out there, you know, multiple times because of a renter. So, this way it imposes a fine on them that the owner has to pay to Elk Grove City because we've had to go above and beyond what we normally have to do. And I am going to be very quick because my poor husband is waiting for his dinner. And I can, as far as, as a side joke, you want more space, can't we just take Howard Hughes' little oddball out there and use that for our new police department? But, I'd really like you all to take, do you all have a copy of this?
We do.
And take this into consideration and I can email each one of you, my email. I've run over some of this with a relative of mine who, I'll explain, is a federal, San Francisco federal judge as to what I could or could not put on here. But, I still think our city attorneys need to go through this and see what our laws are here in conjunction of this can be also incorporated in our, our ordinances here. Any questions or thoughts?
No, thank you.
Roberta, thank you for coming in and you've been here for at least almost two hours or so from DMV, that's probably short line.
I'm retired. I am retired. I did the, I did the good computer system update, gave them the data so they could go ahead and update all the computers and they lost, they didn't lose, they chose to throw it away because of the fact that they felt we, we were outdated as retirees.
Wow.
So, no, I made the good, and I saved the state of California $1.2 million with that computer upgrade.
Wow.
Thank you, Roberta. If you can give a copy to the city attorney, that'd be great. Next speaker is Alana Arcurio.
Yes.
Following Alana is Anthony Cooper.
Hello, thank you, everybody. I think I came before you a year ago and it was not good circumstances. I can't believe it's been about a year, but the city was facing some very challenging racial incidents and so, I'm glad today earlier with the disability recognition as well as the multicultural committee to see that there have been some strides to create a more positive and inclusive community. But, then I also wanted to just check in, I know that ALF presented a report and to see what has been done in the interim and how are we working towards specifically ensuring that we keep this a place that's no place for hate. Thank you.
I'll take my answer here.
So, thank you very much. I think if Karen, if you can connect with her on the report, we've already heard it on council, so there's some action that we've recommended and if you could get the update from Karen, that'd be great.
Mayor, but I do just want to acknowledge, Alana, and I know you were out of the country at that time, but Alana was our facilitator for that day, so it's good to see you again. Thank you for your service back then. I would just say on a quick note, we talked, we mentioned in the, the multicultural committee that they, they too have gone through the, the implicit bias training and we're attempting to spread that out broadly, more broadly to the community, so I'll just add that real quick. Thank you.
Okay, Anthony Cooper is our next speaker. Following Anthony is Michael Manaski.
Good evening, mayor and vice mayor and council. Man, what a great meeting to come to, speaking of safety. I was born in 1978, been Sacramento area, many different communities in Sacramento area and left Elk Grove, came back and I would not rather be in any better place than this city. And I appreciate every one of you and each and everything that you guys do. The reason I'm coming here is to just bring notice to all the trunk or treats that are coming in Elk Grove. And speaking of community, Elk Grove is amazing when it comes to the community about safety and the churches and our church, Reflect Church is going to be providing one down in old Elk Grove. Hopefully, in the years to come, we're going to be able to use the pad there. I know there's a lot of red tape to use that pad. Last year broke my heart, that pad was black and dark and nobody using it. Last year broke my heart, that pad was black and dark and nobody using it. It was like a great resource where we can have a big event, bring notice to Old Elk Grove and the businesses down there, the great people that thrive down in that, just smaller area, but just such big hearts down there. And we're a smaller church, but I'd like to thank the big churches, the small churches and the organizations that come together on such a time where safety is so important. I know all of us, when we were little kids, we used to go to house to house, just hoping that people are doing the right thing. And with the great community people that are doing the great thing of safe candy, you know, this is stuff we're eating, our children are eating. And I'd just like to thank everybody for the great work that they do on that one day and also each and every day that safety, being in law enforcement, safety is my most important thing. And again, I'd like to thank you. I don't want to take too much more of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Michael Manaski. Following Mike Manaski is Lynn Wheat. You can start, Mr. Manaski.
Climate change is the defining issue of our time and we are at a defining moment. We face a direct existential threat. Climate change is moving faster than we are and its speed has provoked a sonic boom SOS across our world. If we do not change course by 2020, we risk missing the point where we can avoid runaway climate change with disastrous consequences for people and all the natural systems that sustain us. Scientists have been telling us for decades, over and over again, and far too many leaders have refused to listen. The commitments made so far by parties to the Paris Agreement represent just one third of what is needed. Our fate is in our hands. The world is counting on all of us to rise to the challenge before it is too late. I count on you all. Thank you.
That was the UN Secretary General Antonio Guterres last month. This last Monday, the International Panel on Climate Change released an updated report. Oh, coal miners not coming back, I guess. The Secretary General said that climate change is the defining issue of our time. The tipping point is 2020, not 2030, as previously predicted. Political, we're, we're not anticipating the zero decade. We are, we have already spent the zero decade. Political leaders have refused to listen to scientists' warnings for many decades, according to the UN Secretary, Secretary General's words. The Paris Agreement prescribes only one-third of the needed changes to prevent catastrophic global warming. It's time for this council to sharpen its pencils and redraft the city's climate action plan. As it is, it's too little, too late.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Lynn Wheat. Following Lynn Wheat is Randy Becker. Lynn Wheat is our next speaker. Come on down, Lynn.
Good evening, Lynn Wheat. And there's a couple of things I want to talk about. First, I want to talk about our police funding. As was indicated earlier in the discussion, it is like 60% of our general fund budget. But missed from that discussion is that many are paying for police services through their assessments on their property tax bill that are increased every year. So, as we discuss hiring more police, I think that those that live in that area ought to be looking at their assessment bills because those can be increased 2% every year. Second thing I want to talk about is I keep hearing how you all are going to address our traffic issues. And when we look at what was decided and adopted into the 2003 general plan, we were made completely aware that our intersections and many of our streets would be operating at a level of service D or maybe better. And many of them would be operating at a level of F. In the new general plan update, not much is changing and it's gonna be the same situation. And I hear some saying that we're gonna make the traffic issue better by using Uber. Well, I, I consider myself a mature, older female and I'm not comfortable using Uber. And I don't think I'm gonna be alone in that. And so, is that really a realistic mitigation? I would suggest that you have an opportunity, as you're doing this general plan update, to look at your policies that are creating this increased traffic. It's said in this that I-5 and 99 are currently at levels of service F. And that is why Caltrans is not buying on to the Camera Road project without you, us taxpayers, paying to widen I-5. This is not fair. This needs to be discussed. I think that some of the messages that are being sent this season are not accurate and are not truthful. I'd rather have the truth than the lies, which leads me to our general plan update. And the policies around that, the whole reason for this is to go into these gray areas, the 8,000 acres where we, as taxpayers, spent over a million dollars on the first application, which was denied by LAFCO. The whole general plan update's primary focus is another 8,000 acres. And in some of the documents, it is already acting as if LAFCO has approved those SOIs. Lastly, I have a map in 2004, which really has me believing that our soccer field's not gonna happen. And it is further validated by the information that I'm taking the time to read that general plan update. I'm seeing more houses. This was by a developer. All these little bubbles are houses, more and more houses. And that is Lynn Wheat taking no more than three minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. Randy Becker, please. Randy Becker, come on down. Following Randy is Vanessa Attilis.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Actually, the conversation goes back to the 90s as I talked to you folks from the beginning, one of the reasons why we became a city. Now, I have full faith in our chief and our police department. One of the things that I was going to discuss is, is that we need to start the conversation and evidently tonight starts the conversation. And over the next six months, a year, or whatever time it takes, once different studies are gone through, we need to have some hard conversations and some hard looks in the mirror. Because if you go back to the 90s, the reason, one of the reasons we became a city is because of controlling our own police force and having our own police force under our jurisdictions of what we wanted. It's what we want. It's not what the five of you want or, or the chief wants. It's we, we as a group, every one of us. So, I applaud the mayor when he says we need to bring it back for agenda. It should be an agenda at least every quarter. It's the most important thing next to traffic that's on the citizens' minds. The two things that are defining this city right now, the third is jobs, the fourth is housing. Almost probably 90% of the people you talk to in and around this area. So, I strongly recommend that we move forward with this conversation and we have it openly. However, we have it in this setting or we have some type of citizens being involved with an ad hoc with the police department? Somewhere along the line, as Steve talked about, funding, whether the mayor wants to raise taxes or not, we're gonna have to take a hard look at whether or not we want certain things. And if we want to support our police department like we want to, then they've gotta have the facility they need. They've gotta have it. Otherwise, they can take over this, this area right here and you, we can have this meeting in the street. Because somewhere along the line, once again, we go back to the reason we become a city. The reason the police department has such a following, an importance of support in this community, it goes back decades and it will continue. Because if it doesn't continue, people will leave and you will see a decline of city functions and, and the quality of life. And that's not something I want to see, whether I'm alive or not. Meaning, I don't want to see my, my children that are adults have to live with that. So, we got some hard conversations we need to have, open conversations, not arguments. And, and my comments shouldn't be used or misunderstood. I'm a strong supporter of this, of the police department. But, but I'm also looking at the idea of the importance of possibly having to raise funds, whether we like it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Vanessa.
I wasn't gonna speak tonight. Clearly, I'm in basically my PJs, but I got angry and poor Brenda had to decipher my rage writing. I came tonight actually just to speak to Chief Noblet because I wanted to set up a meeting with him about police surveillance use in the city and so I'm gonna do that with him in a little bit. But I first and foremost want to say that I absolutely disagree with you, Mayor, that I do not believe we need a police officer at every door. I don't want to live in that police state and that would be disproportionately. What was that?
That's just a figure of speech.
Okay, well.
Don't make it literally.
I, I would not support such a thing. And secondly, you, you may not notice as a council, but the fact that these two gentlemen came tonight and spoke about, you know, public safety and policing issues and had such a wonderful and meaningful engagement with you and took up 30 minutes of public comment, you know, when it should have been six minutes, was wonderful because that is an opportunity for that public engagement and we need that back and forth. I believe that policing and public safety is something that we should have on the agenda. Rarely do Randy and I agree, but he is right. It should be on the agenda every quarter. It should be in a public forum so that we can discuss it with our police officers and our elected officials. This was not the time to do it, though. And you guys have routinely, as I've noticed, and I've been coming to council for two years now, engage with the men that come up here and bring up issues that you think are, that you think are important. But when people like Lynn Wheat, who comes up with well researched information every single time, she is a, a wealth of information and fantastic public advocate in our city. And we don't necessarily agree on a lot of things, Lynn and I, but I am always in awe of her. She brings you really important, meaningful things that are very, very rarely, I can only remember one time where you guys ever engaged in a back and forth with her about it. Even last week, she brought something up that was public safety related, about fixing streets. And again, no engagement, but men are routinely given longer time to speak and a more engagement. And I find that unacceptable. If you're gonna allow people to go over time, it needs to be consistent and you need to be engaging with the people back and forth. I've brought things to you and you told that gentleman that his information was well researched. I've brought you statistics and data and well researched things in the past. I know Lynn Wheat has and a variety of other women. And I don't think that you notice it. I'm not calling you sexist or anything. I'm just saying, it is a fact and I've gone back and I noticed it specifically after the last meeting. And I went back and watched a couple of the previous council membership meetings and there is always more engagement with the men and we need to think about that. Thank you.
So, thank you, Vanessa. But for the record, I was allowing speakers to finish their thought and I was asked for a summary. We've gone back and forth with this. Look, we have a city which we want to engage the community. If you're speaking, I'll allow you to finish. And I think your categorization of how we treat men and women, I don't think that's accurate. But I'll be mindful, to be fair, that from here on out, please finish your, your thought and when you hear the buzzer, it's time to wrap it up. So, thank you very much for your comments. Let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tried to make this brief, just a few items I wanted to touch on. Trying to get the community engaged in some topics they normally aren't really interested engaging in, budget and finance for the city. We're having a workshop coming up on October 25th, Thursday evening. We're gonna have a food truck and some opportunity to listen to the public and get some direction on our future priorities that will be presented to the city council later. Also, a reminder from the police department to register your security camera. Police Department encourages residents to register their video surveillance systems with the police department's database. Knowing where these systems are located can help officers to collect videos, evidence that could help solve a crime. More information and a registration portal can be found on the front page of the police department's website. Also, those of you that are like me, they can never remember which day it is, if it's recycling or green waste, we now have a new tool. You can get a text and it'll tell you which, which cart to put out on the given day.
Can I just make a note on that?
Yeah.
I am at the mercy of my neighbor, both at the time they put their cans out and two, that they know what they're doing. So, I was interested in that and I've gone onto the website. I cannot find that lookup tool anywhere.
If you go to elkgrovecity.org/recycle.
That?
About halfway down the page, there's a lookup finder. It's, I think it defaults to the recycling lookup, how to dispose of something. So, you have to click over to the Find Your Service Day.
Okay.
And then you put in your address.
Yeah.
And once you find your service day, there's a little button at the top that says, Set Up A Reminder. So, once you, it'll bring up the calendar, once you've looked up your service day and then right at the top.
Okay. So, I didn't trust the system and dive deep enough then, huh?
Yes, Set Up A Reminder.
Thank you.
All right. Another upcoming event, Multicultural Committee is gonna be hosting the Festival of Lights on Tuesday, October 30th, beginning at 6 o'clock, Laguna Town Hall. Festival of Lights is traditionally celebrated by Hindus, Jains, Sikhs, and Buddhists. This free event will feature cultural dancing, colorful decorations, and refreshments. And then, the ever popular zombie tag game returns this coming Saturday, October 13th. Following the game is Disney's Nightmare Before Christmas at around 7 o'clock. Members of the public can review this, report on the city's website for more information. Quick update on a couple of our capital projects, continuing the dialogue with our planning commission in the community on the general plan update. Coming up on October 18th, there's gonna be discussion on Chapter 6, Mobility and the Transportation Analysis Guidelines. Let's see, down, going down to the community center with the senior center and Veterans Hall. We've received two proposals on the RFP for our, for our cafe that we're looking to have inside the community center. The senior center as well as staff are gonna be reviewing those. Also, you may have seen on Civic Center Drive, the big structural steel sections going up on the community center. It's really, it's really coming along and making some good progress. Project is scheduled to be completed next summer. Also, making some good progress with public art. We just went back out to, to RFQ for the final music piece at the community center, Civic Center, and also the animal shelter public art is out to bid. Those will be, those proposals are due on November 8th. And I think that should do it for my report this evening. Happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, just to close the loop on that, it's called Waste Wizard and it works.
No additional questions?
If you're, if you were six years old, you would have figured it out.
Glass houses, Councilman Detrick. Glass houses.
I'm way older, I get it. Son.
All right, next item.
Take us to Section 7, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Councilman Detrick.
Thank you. Attended the ribbon cutting for Costco. Biggest, biggest thing we've had in 10 years. That was a huge, I believe the entire city council was there. So, it was a huge event, great asset to Elk Grove. Glad we've been able to pull that together. Had the opportunity to go to one of Musical Mayhem's productions, Frog and Toad. It was a Broadway musical. They have a, various programs. They start with kids from four years old to 10 and then their older kids from 11 to 18. This was the younger kids. This was the younger kids. Uh, being a grandparent's phenomenal. Uh, my wife and I were able to go there and see these four-to-ten-year-olds put on a performance, and, uh, is, is pretty heartwarming. And that's the kinda thing we need more of in El Grove. And I know one of the things on our radar is putting a Performing Arts Center. And every time I meet with these folks, they go, you know, any, any better, any more progress? I go, it's the same money with, uh, lack of funds. But hopefully, over time, we'll be able to pull that together. Had my Sacramento Metro Cable Television Commission meeting. And, uh, the income coming into the Cable Commission is dropped by about six percent. So, I think an email was sent to you, Jason, and some of the other staff that the projections, uh, are gonna be probably, you know, six to ten percent lower than what was forecasted. Still be over a million dollars net to the city. So, that's, uh, one of the, one of the boards that we actually get income from and rather than cost us money. Attended the Crime and Safety Event out at Franklin High School that was hosted by Vice Mayor Soon, Councilwoman Nguyen, and Sandra, the President of the Community, Franklin Community Association. And Chief, your, your team did a great job. And we had, uh, Sheriff's Department there representing the schools. And, uh, it was a, it was a great event. Piggybacking on that Friday night. Your team and several other staff members will be here for the new North Laguna Creek Association to have another community meeting, open to the entire public. Focus was originally for District One and Two that, where they overlap our, excuse me, One and Three, where they overlap our district. But, as always, uh, it's a public event, and the public's welcome to hear everything that's going on with the city and hear more about ways to, for crime prevention. Uh, attended the Fallbrook Meet the Candidate last night, Meet the Candidates. And that's always a, a fun event to see all the existing elected officials, as well as the challengers, to hear what they have to bring to the table. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilman Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try and keep this brief. Uh, also, was at the Costco ribbon cutting, cutting. Uh, great day for El Grove. Um, with Councilmember Nguyen, attended the American Legion Post Two Thirty-Three Dinner and fed them dinner. And so, that was nice to get out and spend some time with our veterans. Uh, had the Capital Southeast Connector Meeting out at Rancho Cordova, and then slipped into one of their conference rooms to call into the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority Meeting. And then, um, for, last Friday, came out and helped, uh, some volunteers and members of the Police Department assemble, um, snack bags with thank you notes for the End of Watch Fund that were gonna be given out to the officers that attended Deputy Stusjak's funeral the following day. So, that was a really rewarding way to spend a, a couple of hours. And then that night, went out to the Man Ranch Hops Festival, which, um, I highly recommend. He's gonna do it again next year. It's a great deal with some barbecue and, uh, some beer vendors and a little campfire and a nice band. And, but the setting is amazing. It's out in the back of the, the Man Ranch on a little island in Deer Creek in a little oak canopy forest. And so, um, Vice Mayor came out of the city, and, you know, I had to encourage him to just keep driving down the country road. When you hit the end, you're there. And, uh, so that was a great time. Um, and then, uh, also went to the, the Police Department had a, uh, open house for special needs individuals. And I, I only stopped by for a little while. That was the day that it rained, and they still had a good turnout. But I gotta say, I snapped a couple of pictures because I don't know who had the bigger smile on their face. The kids that were trying out the equipment or the officers that were getting the show on to them. So, just was a really, uh, really neat day, worthwhile experience. And I, I thank the, the PD for doing that, taking that time. Was out at the Giant Pumpkin Festival. It was very well-attended. RT was counseled. I did go to the, uh, Community Crime Forum the other night. And at the Sanitation Board District this morning, nothing necessarily of, of interest to El Grove. There was an update on the, um, massive amount of work that's going on out at the, uh, Treatment Plant. But also, an update or a, a check-in on the Confluence Program, which is the way sanitation board takes non-fee, non-rate revenue, uh, either from sale of assets or interest on investments or whatever, and how they put that back out in the community. Goes to, um, rate assistance, uh, programs. It goes to environmental stewardship. They've cleaned up, I, I believe, Mayor, that the number was six tons in six months as a direct, uh, amount from, from the efforts of the Confluence Program. But I, I think the number is closer to eight hundred tons total that they've taken out of the American River Parkway from trash debris and human waste. And so, that's a pretty great program. Then there's also an economic development component that about a one-point-two million dollars a year between the Sewer District and the Sanitation District is available to pay up to fifty. That's five-zero percent of the impact fees for new and expanding businesses. And it is remarkably untapped. So, put that in your pocket, make sure people know. I mean, it's not a huge, but, you know, save somebody forty, fifty grand, um, that helps them make payroll that first month. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, attended the, our Library Authority since we last met. Um, I wanted to highlight, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, uh, for the, um, Public Library Foundation. There's the Walk for Literacy happening, um, down at, uh, at, I think it's, uh, Williamland Park. And, um, they're great, uh, partners and supporters of the Sacramento Public Library Authority. So, encourage folks to participate in that. Um, Transportation Committee for, uh, SACOG. We had, and we talked about the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy that we're looking to adopt next year. There's some, there's some, you know, we heard earlier, um, talk about the Climate Action Plan, um, and, uh, and then the General Plan Update. We need to be, this is all coming home to roost for our community, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, MTP, and SCS. In order for, they, they take a look at the six-county region, twenty-two cities, and all the transportation projects, coupled in there, run the models and to see how the greenhouse gas emissions get distributed. Um, the Resources Board is requiring a nineteen percent reduction for that, for this whole area. Our projects, all in, result in about fourteen percent. What that means is if we don't find a way to meet those hurdles, we start to lose funding for some of our transportation projects that send us backwards in terms of, uh, our ability to, to deal with traffic and so forth. So, it, it's something that we all need to start paying attention to, um, as we do, as we're doing the, you know, this is timely considering we have the mobility and, um, segment coming up for the General Plan Update. But it's, it's just something we gotta keep, keep watching and be cognizant of. Um, also, as Councilmember Hume mentioned, the Man Hops and Brew Fest was, um, the city slicker's introduction to the, uh, the outdoors. Um, I have gone camping once or twice, but, um, I'm, I'm joking. But, uh, it, it was beautiful. Uh, gave me a great appreciation for, uh, the nature that is right, literally, in our backyard. So, the city was a sponsor of the event. I hope they sponsor it again next year. And I would love to help them, um, promote it, you know, and get more folks out there. Because if you can imagine going all the way back out, and it was no exaggeration, Councilman Hume was trying, had told me to keep going because I felt like I was in the middle of nowhere and was about to turn around. And then you see a sign that said halfway there. So, by the time you get out there, and it opens up these canopies of woods like he was talking about, if you envision that, that barbecue happening, corn on the cob, tri-tip, music stage back, in the background, um, and everybody just having a good time, another place for community residents to get to know one another on that basic human level, um, it was, it was really, it was really good. Um, so, hope, everybody, this is the first year. Hope everybody comes out to, uh, to, to visit next year. Those hops, by the way, are sold to our local breweries. So, our, our local breweries were using those hops to make the beer that they had out there. So, um, it was neat. El Grove Rotary Beef and Reef, um, their annual event. Attended that on the, at the Lent Ranch. It was a good time had by all. Uh, End of Watch Wiffle Ball, you know, that was a, another thing. We stopped by on that, uh, Councilmember Hume and Councilmember Nguyen and I. It, it's done by End of Watch, and, and a lot of officers from all over come participate. But each of these wiffle ball games are set up, and the, they have the names of fallen officers, uh, on each field. And, and so, it's, um, it's quite telling when you, when you look at and you see, you know, all, all these names out there. Um, it's, it's very, very good for us to remember what sacrifices our officers make, uh, sometimes. Went to the, um, Gresha. Um, had, Councilmember Nguyen and I, uh, attended as a guest to the Gresha, um, Greater Sheldon Association Meeting, um, just to talk to them about city events, uh, yeah, city, um, city events. And then, um, attended the Filipino Day National Association, their annual event, Filipino Fork. They've got a great program for their youth in teaching kids about Filipino culture, as well as surrounded by great, great food and fun times. Pumpkin Festival is mentioned. Future Farmers of America Dinner, that, again, was held at Lent, Lent Ranch was another. That was actually my first time attending that event. Um, what a great, uh, great celebration there as well. We mentioned the Franklin Crime Community Event. Uh, wanna commend, um, Councilmember Nguyen and, uh, and Sandra Alpo Fides, um, and the Franklin Community and, um, for putting that on. And El Grove Laguna Forums and, and Jack's, or Tribune, El Grove Tribune for stream, streaming that. This morning, um, led a group of students, including my son, on Walk to School Day. Uh, that was a great time, too, seeing all these kids excited about walking and rolling to school. Uh, highlight for the, uh, it was part of the El Grove School District's, um, event. And then today, we, uh, I wanted to also highlight, today is Real Men Wear Pink Day. And it's, uh, it's acknowledgement of the, uh, or supporting the American Cancer Society and, uh, in the fight against breast cancer. And, um, with that, I will, uh, turn it over to the Mayor. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Um, in the interest of time, uh, this is supposed to be a short meeting. Uh, but, uh, I've attended a number of the events that I've already mentioned. The only thing I wanna highlight that wasn't mentioned is the Nigerian Independence, uh, Dinner, which was composed with a number of, uh, Nigerians within our community and the up-and-coming community and the number of, uh, folks that are, are here who are of Nigerian descent. Um, aside from that, I wanted to close the loop on, uh, Chief, bringing back to council. Uh, I don't think, uh, it was clear that we had a consensus. So, I wanna make sure that, that, uh, there is a consensus. And so, we can bring back some of the, uh, the data that you may have in contrast with Nathan Champion.
I mentioned it, and I think you seconded it, and I think there's just...
There's two.
Yeah.
So, we good?
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent fine with that. I mean, the Chief's done a good job about keeping us informed on a pretty regular basis. But, I don't know. I don't know if you think a quarter, quarter might be a little bit much. But, I, I think I'd leave it at your discretion when you, you see time, you know, when things are fit.
And I would agree with that. I mean, workload, obviously. You're our top cop, so I know you're being stretched pretty thin. Uh, but, you know, I, obviously, something that's a continual feedback. Aside from that, you and I, we talk regularly. I'm sure the other councilmembers do as well. We have a good temperature. Uh, but for the sake of transparency and for the sake of the community, uh, you know, folks like Nathan Champion who, who needs more information, I think that might be helpful, so...
For, just real quickly, Mayor, for what it's worth, I think that's a good idea. And, and, uh, you know, perhaps we can come back. Uh, I can make that presentation, and we can decide at that point what interval, you know, you would like to see, um, going forward. But I, I, I actually appreciate the opportunity to, to get the public's input on, on our operations and the size and scope of what we do.
Excellent. Okay.
Mayor, one more thing. Sorry, on this note. So, Chief, when are you doing your beep meetings again? Because that's something that I think folks might, you know, we could try to advertise that a little bit better. Folks can get, without having to be here, they could get this information, too.
Agreed, and I'll, I'll, I would need to, Vice Mayor, I'd need to check with Pop to see what the schedule is for that. But that would certainly be something, you know, I can weave into that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, excellent.
I think, I think part of the issue, in fact, I was talking about it the other night, is when you were doing the beep meetings, it got to a point where there was more officers than there were residents at the beep meeting. And then we even cut back. And I actually remember one that I went to at, uh, Albionni, not Albionni, Herbert Elementary, and one person showed up. So, I know that was kinda trying to find that balance between too much and not enough. So, it's, it's a tricky deal.
It does sound, though, like there's, there's a, a bit of renewed interest amongst, at least some members of the, of the community.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know, perhaps, perhaps we'll see an uptick in attendance.
Perfect.
Excellent. All right, next item.
Take us to Section Eight, the Consent Calendar Items.
All right, uh, let's see. We have, but, uh, no members of the public signed up to speak. So, I wanna close, open and close a public comment, and...
Move the consent calendar?
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor? Aye. Pose, extension. All right, next item.
We have no items under Section Nine, which will take us to Section Ten, our Regular Agenda Action Items and Recommendations, starting with item, well, and finishing with item number ten-point-one. Consider an Ordinance Amending Chapter One Point One-One of the El Grove Municipal Code Concerning the Housing Appeals Board and Local Appeals Board.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Shane Diller, Assistant Director in Development Services. Uh, the item before you this evening proposes an ordinance amendment that would change the way we do appeals for some code enforcement items. It also has a proposed resolution that would delegate the appointment of the hearing boards that we would establish under the code amendment to the city manager. I've got a brief presentation to walk you through the background of how we got to this item and why staff's making the recommendations that we are. Code enforcement issues notices for code violations of various types, and they're all appealable. Uh, the Municipal Code, specifically One Dot Eleven of the Code, provides a process for timing and, uh, and systems that we use when we process appeals. Traditionally, the city has used neutral, contracted, uh, single hearing officers, meaning a single person, uh, to hear a code enforcement appeal when it comes in of, of all types. Uh, some, some instances, uh, the appeals system has used senior city staff that are outside of the code enforcement or police departments to hear those items, uh, to act as impartial hearing officers there. Uh, staff has determined that some items, some appeals require the hearing board that I previously mentioned, and that the California Building Code has specific language in there that guides us, uh, in regards to how we establish the Boards of Appeals and what they hear. Primarily, this change is driven to be consistent with the California Building Code, which guides, uh, us on appeals for certain types of matters. And to, uh, implement what recently occurred in case law, Littman versus the City of Oakland, clarified that code enforcement matters and appeals that are heard for use, maintenance, change of occupancy of buildings and structures must be heard by the Housing Boards of Appeals as set out in California Building Code, Section One Eight-Eight. Uh, additionally, the California Building Code has a section right after that one that talks about the Local Appeals Board, which is a, an appeals board that would hear, uh, matters related to building construction in the city. Real quick to dive into those two boards for a second. Uh, the Housing Appeal Boards hear basically existing, uh, structures, existing occupancy, housing issues, those sorts of things related to code enforcement violations. The Local Board of Appeals hears, uh, appeals related to new construction or proposed construction. Whereas in someone would be proposing an alternative means or method to construction for something that has not been constructed yet. And that's the distinction between those two appeal boards that, uh, the proposed ordinance would create. For a little bit of background, the appeals that code enforcement receives, uh, we've had twenty-six formal appeals since 2015. And two of those would have been matters that would be heard under the new Housing Board of Appeals process. Uh, the city in its history has never received an appeal related to the pre-construction type of appeal. Uh, the Building Department has always effectively worked out, uh, discussions and, and, uh, recommendations related to alternative means and methods. So, we've never had to empanel a, a Board of Appeals for the Local Appeals Board. Code enforcement does not anticipate that our, uh, number of appeals of this type will rise. Uh, we anticipate over time, they'll probably stay at about ten percent of appeals. Just to give you a little bit of background, uh, the most common types of appeals code enforcement hears are for, uh, fence setbacks and vehicle parking issues like inoperable vehicles and driveways, RV parking, that sort of thing. Those types of nuisance and zoning cases are not, uh, cases that would move to this new process. Uh, they would continue to be heard under the single appeal officer system They would continue to be heard under the single appeal officer system that we've utilized pretty effectively up until this point. Staff's recommendation is driven primarily to make sure that we're compliant with the case law and the California Building Code, and specifically to the resolution to delegate to the city manager. It's one of efficiency and appeal timing. Appeals are required to be heard within 30 days of a request. And we're required to provide actual notice 15 days prior to that hearing. And when you consider the complications with making notice in that window, it really leads us about a 10-day window to be able to schedule an appeal and make notice and provide that everybody's gotten the due process there. That's one of the reasons why we're making the recommendation to delegate the appointing authority to the city manager to allow for us to be able to make this window regularly without having to come back and amend those timeframes. We feel as though the timeframes both resolve matters quickly and provide good due process. Appeals are generally heard during regular business hours, which would create or could create a scheduling issue for standing board members if we all, if we use an alternative of a standing board. The volunteer members of that board typically have day jobs, similar to our planning commission or our other city committees. They usually meet in the evening, and the appeals are typically held during the business We do use a professional on-call service. We have traditionally used the McGeorge School of Law Institute of Administrative Justice as our appeals officers. They've recently stopped providing that service. So this month, we've entered into a new contract with staff from the hearing officer pool there that have created a separate firm called California Hearing Officers. And we've got a contract now established with them to hear our appeals. So the system of the on-call professional neutral hearing officer continues even though we've left McGeorge this month. And they're usually readily available in the short timeframe we have to be able to schedule those hearings.
Shane?
Sir?
Is the cost the same?
Is the cost the same for the--
McGeorge versus the private?
No, the private company is about $60 more an hour than McGeorge was charging. McGeorge was charging about $180, and we're at $240 an hour with the new company. We do not exhaust the total budget that we have set aside for appeals, and that cost is absorbable, as would be the other costs we've laid out in the change we're proposing tonight. But there is an increase to the cost of the change that caught us at short notice. They gave us only 30 days' notice that they were backing out, and we had appeals coming in. And so the contract with California Hearing Officers was our best option to keep due process ruling at that point. The appellant's of an appeal are charged $480. You may recall a study and a council item on this a couple of years ago. The actual cost recovery for just the staff time in holding an appeal hovers around 600 and something. But anything above $480, which is also the non-compliance fee code enforcement would charge for a violation that's uncorrected, we felt was the max amount we wanted to charge an appellant for that wouldn't hinder or potentially hinder due process. We do have hardwired in the code the ability for folks to apply for hardship fee waiver or deduction that's processed outside of the department and is made independently through the city manager's office with the process that's in place there. We just spoke about the cost of the hearing officers per hour that we've got now. The average of the hearings that we've had under the administration of, or administrative justice with McGeorge ran, code enforcement, about an average of $1,380 per appeal. Both the per hourly rate increase with California Hearing Officers and the fact that the proposal you have before you would create a board of three hearing officers would raise that to where we believe each hearing would be approximately $3,000. The company does not charge us threefold for the hearing, just the preparation and actual hearing time is charged at three times the rate because of the three hearing officers. The backend work, which can be considerable sometimes to write the decision and publish that, would continue to be charged at the single hourly rate of $240, since only one staff member would be doing that. Again, we believe that this increase is absorbable in the budget, specifically when we look at the fact that two of our 26 appeals in the last three years would fall into this category. And we don't anticipate an increase in these types of cases. They've been pretty static the entire time I've been here and for the history of the city, for the most part. There are alternatives to what we're proposing tonight. One of them would be that the council would directly appoint our contracted firm, California Hearing Officers, as the city's hearing board, and then they would provide staffing to us. If that's your pleasure, we can bring a resolution to that effect back at the next meeting. The council could also appoint a standing appeals board. We've talked a little bit already about why that's not staff's recommendation at this point. The irregular, to say the least, use of the board and the staff time involved in posting board positions and bringing those to council for consideration and then filling vacancies as they come up seem as though it's not the most efficient option to appoint a standing board for this process. Lastly, the building code does allow for the elected body of the agency, the city council or in the county's case, the board of supervisors, to hear these matters directly as a regular agenda item. So you do have the option to have that, though, again, for expediency's sake, that's not staff's recommendation at this point. We do recommend the approval of the ordinance amending a single officer system to a hearing board system and the resolution that would grant the city manager the ability to appoint those hearing boards as they're needed. And that concludes my formal presentation. I'm available for questions.
Questions? There are no questions? Thank you, sir. At this point, I want to open public comment. I see one member of the public signed up to speak, Mr. Michael Manaski. Come on up.
I've submitted my written comments and, for the record, have also sent an email subsequent to a subsequent conversation with Mr. Diller that I had by phone. One of the things that was missing from the report that was in the original staff report but not included in tonight's report is that city employees from other departments were going to be asked to sit on an appeals board, and I just don't see that as being realistic as one of the options, you know, because city employees from other departments aren't necessarily qualified to hear these appeals. They're not versed in this kind of building code language. The appealing, the appeal hearings require disinterested third-party versed in technical language of the building code. I just find it anti-democratic to shift from the elected council to the appointed, to appointment by the city manager. The appeal hearing costs will increase by 50% to 300% from the $1,000 that was estimated to about $1,500 or maybe even $3,000. And that's because the, there could be a split decision, and if there were two rulings with one with the dissent, should the hearing officers disagree, that would cost more. The city council should know about and decide on issues that frustrate a few dozen of our resident homeowners, not a disinterested contract hearing officer. Such council, and I recommend that we have council breakout sessions, and that's the last recommendation, the one at the very bottom, the third recommendation, that you, the council, should be the breakout appeals board. You should be hearing these things. And if you need a specialist to help you understand the language in the building code, then staff should provide that. In fact, we do have people who are specialized in that kind of jargon and language and the convoluted and confabulating rules of the state building code and the municipal nuisance ordinances. I ask you that you incorporate these appeals hearings within existing council meetings. Don't delegate them straight to the city manager. This is a responsibility we expect you to fulfill as elected officials. You could also go to the consent calendar, and you can also go to breakout sessions. But I, again, my recommendation is to go to that, to incorporate the appeals hearings in your regular breakout sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And seeing that there are no additional speaker, I want to close public comment. Counselor Delores Shannon-Dixon. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Hume?
Yeah, just from the staff report and the presentation, this is not going from council to the city manager. It's going from McGeorge School of Law's hearing officers to this other third-party hearing officer. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Currently, staff schedules these as they come up. The city clerk's office has been handling the coordination of appeals as they come in, and then staff schedules the hearing contacting the third-party hearing officer. We'd continue to use that system, just expanding it to a body of three when the type of hearing, the type of violation being heard requires that per the code.
Okay. Well, I would prefer independent, third-party, neutral people handle this rather than making a fence setback become a political issue. So I'll introduce and waive the full reading by substitution, the title only in ordinance amending Chapter 1.11 of the Elk Grove Municipal Code relating to appeals.
Got a motion?
Second.
Yes, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, abstention. Next motion?
I'll also move to adopt a resolution, delegating the authority.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, abstention. All right, meeting is adjourned, 8:41.